Hello, everybody. I'm Bruce Rivers. I'm Local Pastor and Committee, and we're here at the Los Angeles City Hall. We're here for the school board meeting, and there's been some controversial books that have been supposedly put together as a package to donate to elementary schools. And as a grandparent here in this community, some of these books are sexually explicit book material that I think should be handled at home. As I have one grandparent in the elementary school system here, grand, no grandparents, I said, say grandchild in the elementary school system here. So we're here standing for what's right, our pastors in the community and some of those parents and grandparents here. And we're excited about the opportunity to stand with our superintendent and the school for to get the right stuff in our schools. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. In the form of word, I just would like, my first, excuse my ignorance, first of all. I've never been to a board meeting, and I was waiting for the opportunity to speak on the comment on the item I thought would come up at the item. So can we still comment on the items of the agenda? There's about several people here that did want to comment, but we're going to invite it, so nobody moved.
No, we're not there yet. We're not in new business yet. We are still on reports.
Okay, I thought what it says here is public comments on the agenda, and we still can.
That's when I announced that when we get to those agenda items, you have the opportunity to...
I excuse my ignorance, but those are my first ones?
No, no, no. No ignorance here. No, it's, it's...
That's clear, that's all.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you've asked for clarifying the question, but when we get to that item, that's when you'll have the opportunity. Right. Mr. Martinez?
First of all, I want to welcome Lewis, who has some board members. Anyway, I've got a couple things that I want to go over. The first item was, it was an item last, on our board meeting last month, it was item F4, and it was on the consent calendar. It had to do with five books that were being donated, some from GSA, which stands for Gay Straight Alliance Club from Pacheco, and they're donating five books and other resource materials to each of our eight school sites. I was to vote on this item, and I wasn't, I didn't have any information on it, so I asked the board until we got information on it. And after reviewing the books, there was five of them. The first book, it was called Chrysanthemum, it dealt with bullying, which is something that's close to my heart. So that book, to me, was acceptable. The following books, Tango Makes Three, the family book, I Am Jazz, Red A Korean Story, to me, all had LGBT narratives to them. And these are books also that have been banned by Loden County. These exact books have been banned, so there's a battle going on out there in life, and it's a battle that I call a good and evil, and everything that we're exposed to, or we expose our children to, is either good first or it's bad for us. And as a board member, I feel it's my duty to protect our most precious commodity in this district, and that is our children. So I recommend that we don't approve these books that have targeted our young, innocent, most vulnerable children who are in elementary schools. I choose to be morally and ethically correct instead of politically correct. We need to stand for righteousness. We need to make the right decisions and bear the right fruit in life. We cannot govern in fear over man's laws that are made to negatively indoctrinate our children with agendas that will undermine their future development.
Anywhere, if there are any speakers, keep in mind that it's 20 minutes total. So we will start now.
Good evening. My name is Martin Thompson, and I am a National Education Association Board Member representing the Central Valley. Tonight, I'd like to tell you a story about a student named Rodney Biggs. Pinning Rodney Biggs against a locker, a student wailed on him, giving him a black eye, a fractured eye socket, and bruising his ribs. This was not a lone incident for Biggs, who came out as gay to his classmates in a school in Tennessee. Rodney was anything but evil, but had happened to him once. Unfortunately, this is not an unusual event for students who identify within the LGBTQ community. Many of these students fear coming to school suffering from depression, having panic attacks, becoming shrewd, are five times more likely to commit suicide, and have higher risk for substance abuse and risky behavior. They are two to three times more likely to be bullied at school. When LGBTQ students feel the lack of support from their school leaders, the impact is substantial. You have the opportunity tonight to say to these students, "You matter, that you are important to us, and that we support you." Tonight, your actions can help address the needs for more awareness and support for your LGBTQ students who attend your schools from kindergarten through 12th grade. Small steps by you tonight could lead to bigger steps by others in the future and send a message to these students that they belong. I ask you to show your support and do the right thing by accepting these donations of books by the Pacheco High School GSA.
Good evening, board members. My name is Isla Nelson, and I'm the advisor of our Pacheco High School Gay Straight Alliance. This spring, my students were awarded $2,500 in safety in schools grants from the California Teachers Association for anti-bullying projects they've been coordinating. One of the projects is the elementary book donation on tonight's agenda. The club officers who spearheaded this project regret that they couldn't be here tonight to speak with you in person. They graduated last month and have already moved and begun classes at their universities. I haven't actually fully explained to them what's been going on here in regard to the donation, because I know how hurtful it will be. You see, these kids have probably done more work to improve school climate than most of the people sitting in this room, and I'm ashamed that instead of commending them for their work, that this district might rather send them off to college with a slap in the These are kids who can tell you stories of how they were bullied in elementary school, threatened in junior high, verbally harassed and worse, all along their journeys through our school district. But they're not victims, and they remain hopeful for the future of children here who don't have to be doomed to walk a similar path. Rather than wallow in self-pity, these youths took on a difficult work that the responsible adults in this room should be doing. But with nothing but kindness and love in their hearts, they asked, "What can we do to help those who will come after us? What can we do to make our schools safer for all kids?" This donation project was their answer. They know that the research shows that having inclusive texts in our libraries and classrooms decreases bullying and improves school climate for all students. The California Department of Education recognizes this as well, which is why the inclusion of texts that represent LGBTQ students is mandated by state law. In closing, I'd like to share a statement that our GSA president wrote regarding the project. The Pacheco High School GSA would like to present your school with these books, which represent inclusivity, originality, and creativity. These books tell stories about how it's okay to be different, and that it's okay to be you no matter what. I hope these books can influence future generations to spread love and positivity. Sincerely, Alex Osorio, GSA President, Pacheco High School. I hope that you make the right decision tonight, not just the one that is actually legally mandated, and not that you use that as an excuse for the decision...
That's your time.
...but that you do it because it's actually the right thing to do. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Jason Walsh. I'm a history teacher at Los Manistir High School. I'm a parent of a second grader at Westside Union Elementary, and I'm a parent of a student that will attend WSD in the fall of 2020. I attend church on Sundays. I attend the Methodist Church near Invermiller Elementary. My wife, she teaches Sunday school there, and we take our children, and we go nearly every Sunday. We just finished being teachers at the Vacation Bible School event, a week-long event at our church that is an annual summer event. We have over 100 students at that event. When I take my children to church each week, I hope that they learn that God represents love, tolerance, understanding, empathy, and that these are the things that they take away from Christian principles. And I say that because the nature of the remarks by Mr. Martinez seem theological in nature, and that it's a shame that theological remarks would be used to discriminate against and oppress groups of our students. We have a duty, you have a duty, trustees, our administration has a duty, our teachers, certified staff, our classified staff. We have a duty to ensure that we have safe schools that are welcoming to all students that celebrate ethnic, national differences amongst our students, socioeconomic differences amongst our students, sexual orientation amongst our students and the differences that they have, that all of these groups should feel welcome in our school. And I really hope that we don't have students that are watching this tonight, because if we do, they saw one of our trustees, one of their governing members, say that books that reflect their family, their feelings, the way they identify, are immoral and inappropriate. That is totally false. I see students in our classrooms that are struggling with depression because they're going through finding themselves and understanding who they are, and not knowing who allies are, and not knowing if it's safe. There shouldn't be any doubt whether our schools are safe. There should be no doubt. And we have teachers here, we have employees of the district, certified and classified, and if you're an employee of the district and you are dedicated to making sure that our schools are safe, that all students are welcome, that homosexual students are welcome, transgender students are welcome, I'd ask for you to stand up right now if you are dedicated to making sure that this school, this district, all of the schools in our district are completely safe and welcoming. Students, we might have a trustee that thinks your behavior is immoral, but you have allies. You have allies that are standing behind you, you have allies at our school sites, and we will not allow any trustee to force us to do anything that will harm them.
Good evening, everybody. Chairman.
I get my timers in sync here, okay? All right, now you're on.
I'm on. Good evening, everybody. I'm Bruce Rivers. I'm an almost 20-year resident of this community, and I've had 24 grandchildren, if I may say that. Amen. It's a serious mistake on many levels to introduce controversial views on a whole district. It's confusing to our children, contradicts our faith community's beliefs, and overstepped the school role in these different things here in Los Angeles. As a parent, as a grandparent, I believe sexually-based situations should be taught at home first. Now, I was a product of a bullying situation when I was a little fella, then I got big, and I didn't get bullied no longer. My granddaughter was a member at Los Manistir School, and her first four days there, one day, a young lady came up and touched her on the behind and told her, "Ooh, I really like you." I don't want no more boys touching my granddaughter. So first, so I went to the school, and they told me, "Oh, well, you know, come on, Bruce, you know, it ain't all that serious." Well, serious to me. Now, my granddaughter's moved on, and she adjusted and went everything fine, but as I say, as a grandparent and as a parent, I believe my wife, my children, education on sexual matters starts in my house. You do what you want to do in your house, but I don't believe the school should be having this thing. And upon review of the books that were released, the bullying book was perfect, amen? I thought that was a great book, but these other books, at the elementary school level, how many elementary school kids go home and talk about this stuff? None of mine did. I've had 24 of them. None of mine came home asking me about this stuff. My high school students don't even ask me about it right now. So among school-aged children, it's not appropriate yet for babies to be dealing with this issue. I ain't mad at nobody, and I ain't going, "You call me home," or whatever you want to do. I am not a homophobe, and I ain't scared of nothing to nobody. I'm 64 years old. I love every child in this community, but then when I see a grown man standing and kind of roar up at people about something, ain't nobody mad about this. We just want to do it in our own house. You do it at your house, I do it at my house. Leave it out of my school.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here trying to... ...as soon as I'm saying, as a member of the faith community, leader in the faith community, we're not here to be against anybody. We're here to promote the love of Jesus Christ, and He loves everybody. Okay, we want to say that first and foremost. For 17 years, I was the primary coach of First Priority, the high school campus of the Christian club, and we promoted it among the students. We had, at that time, the largest club on campus, and we battled against people in the same group that we hear from today that attacked us. So we're not here to attack, we're not here to even have a battle. What we're saying is the subject matter is not appropriate, especially for elementary school children. We're here to stand up for not only what is right, but what is righteous, not only what is wholesome, but what is holy. That's who we are. We're not here to force our religion on anybody, or force our faith on anybody. We're just here to simply say our children are valuable to us. That sign says "our" children, not the future. Our children are too important to have this subject matter introduced to them in a public school from the library without parental consent. It's just inappropriate. We'd like you to take that into consideration. I know there's all kinds of laws from our state, the state government doesn't believe in the valley values that we believe. We're not, we're not the Bay Area, we're not Sacramento, we're not LA Basin, we enter in the valley. We live by valley values, conservative, all the elements. We hope, we hope those values as well. Again, we're not here to attack anyone, we're not here to be against anyone. We believe the subject matter of these books, four out of five, are not appropriate for children, and that's it. Thank you.
Good evening. Well, I thank you for all being, and for you all being here, doing this job. It's, I'm sure it's a daunting task. My name is George Allen. My wife and I have raised three daughters in this community, and we've worked with people about many issues. First and foremost, we've been part of the Christian community, and at large, we've worked with many churches. Let me say that working with different churches in Los Angeles, it's safe to say that the churches of the community view the homosexual community as being people that need help. There are people in many good Christian organizations that have worked with individuals to help them out of the lifestyle that is most destructive to themselves. Thinking about the high rate of suicide among themselves tells us there is much work to be done. Some might say that it's because of an acceptance issue that they would be compelled to put books in our schools and libraries, but nothing could be further from the truth, because most have hurt themselves after having multiple relationships. That being said, we recognize the issue has become very politicized, and today, we also recognize an embattled group of people have been bludgeoned over and over, and I, and I don't feel this community needs to be clubbed with this political issue. Surely, people might want to say that we are homophobic, but we are not that. Because of a great deal of, because a great deal of time has elapsed, and we recognize it for what it is, and it is a foothold in our community of Los Angeles, like many other communities that have been threatened and live in fear instead of addressing the real issues. I would like to say one other thing. We don't have the demographic of Jewish population especially, a conservative Jewish population, but we would agree that the Jewish population and the Muslim population as well would probably disagree with this issue. I hope I've said these things as kindly as possible. We have no animosity in saying these things, and we feel that these types of materials only bring about a one-sided approach in addressing them, and that makes it prejudicial. Thank you, and I'm sure the Christian pastors of this community would be willing to talk with any one of you about this issue.
My name is Posse Fernando Rangel. This is not politics, it's to protect the innocence of children, Bob Dole. My son is six years young, and he isn't capable of standing up for himself, so as a father, I must stand up for him and be his voice. I love my son, and when I breathe him in, he smells like love and still has a sense of innocence. So it's my duty to protect his innocence from those who purposefully or unwittingly seek to take it from him. Author Tiffany Madison said, "No one loses their innocence. It's either taken or given away willingly." We must protect our children from adult topics and issues, and continue to let our schools become safe haven for young susceptible minds. Prohibiting induction of controversial material, just as we have persistently fought against drugs, gangs, paraphernalia, and unapproved apparel from entering our school campuses. As Ernest Hemingway said, "All things truly wicked start with the innocent." A library is a place where you can lose your innocence without losing your virginity, and that comes from Jermaine Greer. Libraries are sacred places of stored knowledge and is a privileged means to obtain truth and understanding. Our education system has the most exclusive obligation to uphold the integrity of material allowed that will play an important part in shaping and influencing the minds and hearts of the next generation. "The trust of the innocent is the liar's most useful tool," by Stephen King. Our children are trusting us, the adults, to diligently and honorably guard and protect them from any form of harm and deception. We open their eyes to an innocent, pure, and good, as that is what we desire for them to exhibit in society. It is more important that innocence be protected than it is that guilt be punished, for guilt and crime are so frequent in this world that they can all be punished. But if innocence itself is brought to the bar and condemned, perhaps to die, then the citizen will say, "Whether I do good or whether I do evil is immaterial, for innocence itself is no protection." And if such an idea as that were to take hold of the mind of the citizen, that would be the end of security whatsoever. President John Adams. I've traveled around the sun 43 times, and I've come to fully understand that the only first force that corrupts the innocent is the perverse. And Webster's Dictionary defines perverse as "turning the wrong way," DBing equal what is right, true and correct, obstinate and wrong, to misinterpret or misapply, to lead astray, to corrupt. And these words, which I command you today, shall be in your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your children, and shall talk with them when you sit in your house, when you walk by the way, when you lie down, when you rise up. You shall diligently keep the commandments of the Lord your God, his testimonies and his statutes, which he commanded you, and you shall do what is right and good on the side of the Lord, that it may be well with you. And the Lord commanded us to observe all these statutes, to fear the Lord our God, for our good always, that he might preserve us alive as it is this day. Then it will be righteousness for us if you are careful to observe all these commandments before the Lord our God, as he commanded us. Now therefore, fear the Lord, serve him in sincerity and security."
That's your time. Amen.
My name is Greg Logan. I am a student at Los, at Loden High School right now, and I am gay. I just want to say that there's no magic powder in those books that are going to turn your students gay, just to clarify. When I was 12, I realized that I was gay, and I was terrified. I came out to my friends first, who were accepting, and then I came out to my parents, who were also accepting, and I'm very thankful for that. But I came out of school, and when I came out of school, I was told that there was something wrong with me. I was told that I was mentally, there was something wrong with me. I was told that I was insane, basically. Because of that, I, I have depression and anxiety. I suffered from panic attacks weekly for a while, and I fell into self-harm. I am almost a year clean now, so it's very hard to say this, because there are people who are saying that I, these books are going to corrupt kids. No, they're going to help them. When, if I had had these resources when I was a kid, I probably would have turned out a lot less damaged than I am today. If these kids can read something and see that what they are isn't abnormal, it's normal, and they're not alone, then it's, it's going to help them. It's not going to hurt anybody. These books are wrong.
Well, as of last, last meeting, just want to give my point of view. I was not clear on the acronym, so many acronyms as a new person. I did not understand what GSA meant, and it was really a difference of understanding and being able to give your solid opinion. And when Mrs. LaVian told me, I said, "What's happening?" And she said, I asked her, "What is GSA?" And she said, "Gay Straight Alliance." I knew then that the correct thing was for me was to support anybody in this district. That's my job. That's my job. I'm a Catholic. I mentioned last, last month that I was actually a teacher for a summer, a summer camp. That doesn't change the fact that I'm not going to support anybody. I'm going to change this because of my personal belief. My job here is to support our district and to support anybody that's not the norm or is it, whatever it is. They are part of a vision no matter what. That doesn't change the fact that your beliefs will change, that your actions will change. Libraries, like they mentioned, what do they do? They give us knowledge. Knowledge is what we need, and that's what I did. I had ignorance last, last, last meeting. I couldn't speak up because I was ignorant to the acronym, and because of that, I couldn't even fathom what to, what to speak. The Lord said, and they mentioned earlier, "Fear the Lord. Fear him by pointing your fingers. Don't point your fingers. Don't point fingers and exclude anybody, because whoever is free of sin, let them throw their first stone." And for me, just to clarify, in this, solid, if I would have been in last month and I would have understood the acronym, I would have said, "Yes, I support that." Why do I? Because I'm including everybody in my district, and that's, I'm not excluding anybody. My job is to understand where I stand. My job is at home, I'm a mom, I'm a teacher, and that's my job at home, right here. It's an official. And there is, that's what I am, that's what I need to do. I need to represent everybody in this school district, I'm sorry, in the district. And enough, if people believe different, that's fine. I respect you, but our job is to respect everybody that's in our district. And I just wanted to clarify the last time, I did not understand the acronym, so thank you for clarifying.
I'd just like to add that I, first and foremost...
I'd just like to add that I, first and foremost, put my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, up. He's number one in my life. He teaches me to love everybody. We love everybody. And He also says in His Word that we shouldn't judge. I can't be the judge and jury on what will happen to anybody who's wrong. We don't know what directions our students are going to go. That is up to Jesus Christ. He, if you believe in that, then that's where you better put your faith. The school district where I sit, I'm elected official on the public school board. There's no Christian values on this public school board. I ran for it, and I won the seat. I had to know when I came here, I had to know that Christianity is not a part of the public school system. I think we all know that. Has anybody in this room viewed the California Healthy Kids Act? Has anybody read that policy or read ED Code 51934251935? Has anybody taken a look at that? It clearly, this has been going on for ten years. This is nothing new. This has been going on for ten years in the state of California. They've held many seminars in the city of Sacramento. They've held seminars, they've had clergy there, they've had physicians there, they've had medical staff there, trying to come up with a way to protect these students. In January, my cousin came home and found his son hanging in the garage. He was, he was gay. He couldn't come out to his father to tell his father that, because he was raised in a Christian home. He died in his father's garage, because nobody knew what this young kid was dealing with. If this book, or one book, will save one kid, I have to say yes. I don't want to go to another funeral, not my family. I don't want to see another kid hurt. We're here to protect kids from bullying, from name-calling, and I don't know if you know, I have a five-year-old. Name-calling starts in kindergarten. It starts early. They don't start calling names when they're ten and eleven. It starts before that. Oh, I was talking to some coworkers, a lot of kids don't get this at home. Parents are not educating their kids. I got a granddaughter. I don't want her to read the books, but guess what I'm teaching her? I'm teaching her, "The first question you have, to come to me." I will educate you. If I can't educate you, I know somebody who does. I can get you the answer. Trust me. I can find an answer for my granddaughter. The books have been in libraries. If one kid could find a book that's having a problem, then they should be able to read it. If they could say one line in this school district, "Let it be so. Let it be so." We can't judge. We can't do that. Your Bible tells you you can't judge. I understand the disconnect. We all, we all fall short of something. We don't know what these kids' issues are. The nephew that I, the cousin that I lost, healthy, able-bodied, would have never suspected that he had any kind of problem. You would have never known. Nobody would have ever known. The family is now going through support. There's a lot of depression. There's a divorce in the wind because of the family has fallen apart. This has caused a major problem. In the city of Sacramento, where all of this took place, a pastor there spoke, a female, and what she said, she said, "I would vote yes for this books, these books that are placed in libraries, if I don't have to bury one more kid." We don't know this, we don't know the extent of this. Read the Healthy Kids Act. Take a look at this information. It's out there. These kids are not far in love with this, with the shame and doubt that they have. As a board member, I'm here to keep them safe. Safety is number one to me. Bullying sits right at your heart rate. Bullying is number one to you. These kids are bullied. These kids are name-calling. So for me, I have, if my troop members are offended, I have to let you know, I have to support the students of Las Vegas Unified School District.
There was a statement just made that went up the judge. The word God says that the word is good for reproof, for correction. And I say that let us not, let us focus on, you know, whatever the issue is. Let's fix it. Let's not continue to come up with different agendas and enable it, continue to enable it. And that's what I feel is happening. And I say, "Let's fix it." It's not allow it or enable it. And I'll just quote from a quote that says that all that is needed for evil to triumph is for good men and women to stay silent and do nothing, say nothing. And I want to thank everybody that's come up to share their views, because this is what it takes to work through something like this. It's not an easy subject for anybody to deal with. It hasn't even for me to say, you know, speak up and say something about it. So I'll just leave it at that and just pray that, you know, when the vote goes down, that people are making the right decision, not an emotional decision. And again, just focusing on, you know, let us fix something, let's not continue to ignore it. And let it continue. I want to help all these kids, the ones that are struggling. And it's sad, we have too many suicides, and they're not going down, they're going up. And it's because of things like this continuing to enable something like this. So go to students.
Well, I think that the more that we can teach our students tolerance, the better off we will be as a society. And that's exactly our job, is to produce students of strong character and intelligence. It's not our position in the school district to perpetrate and tolerate views. So I think that we need to teach our children about inclusiveness.
I was elected to represent and protect eleven thousand-plus students in this district, plus over a thousand employees in our district. We have LBGTQIA plus students in our district. We have LBGTQIA plus staff in our district. I'm here to protect all of them. If there's anything that I could do to make sure that happens, I'm going to do it. The books that we are talking about tonight, one of the books is on bullying, which everybody says, "That's great," which is, bullying is something we really need to address. Couple of the other books address non-traditional families. And we have students, many, probably more than we could imagine. We have those students who come from non-traditional families. And in non-traditional families means there isn't a mom and dad in the picture. They could be a single parent, foster parents, same-sex parents, could be two moms, two dads, anything. Those students are bullied because of who their parents are. That's not right either. These books address those issues and make, make students aware that there are non-traditional families. So we're not even, you know, we're talking about multiple things besides LBGTQ students. We're talking about non-traditional families. We're talking about situations in which our students are bullied from not anything that they can control. I need to protect all eleven thousand of those students, all one thousand-plus of our employees. These books are approved by the state of California for inclusion, and they're grade-appropriate. These are primary books, basically. They are geared toward our primary students. They're in libraries all over the state of California. If, like has been stated, if this could save one life or it could save a hundred and one lives on Florida, I think it's something that we really need to have available to our students to keep them safe. If there's no other comments, there's something that I would like to read to everybody here tonight and those people that are listening at home, at home or whatever. This afternoon, we, just to make sure that the board did their due diligence, or the board leadership did their due diligence in addressing this issue, we contacted the board of our legal team, legal team, and asked them for an opinion on this. The board was sent this email earlier this afternoon, and I would like to share it with all of you. And I think it's very important that we consider what's in this. The board will be considering an action tonight to accept the donation of library books with LBG, uh, LGBTQ themes, which are on the state-approved list for inclusion in school libraries. And accordingly, they have been determined to be age-appropriate for the students in the grade levels who have access to these books. If the board votes to accept these books, there is no risk of legal liability. However, if the board were to vote not to accept the books, the district would potentially face a risk of legal action and potential liability for engaging in sexual orientation, gender identity, discrimination. The ED Code has broad protections with applied to all aspects of students' educational experiences, including access to state-approved library books. Education Code, Section 220 states, "No person shall be subjected to discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristics that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in Section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration status, in any program or activity conducted by an educational institution that receives or benefits from state financial assistance or enrolls pupils who receive state student financial aid." Therefore, from a risk management perspective alone, it would be my recommendation that the board approve acceptance of these books. Doug Uluba, partner of Atkinson, Anderson, Boya, Rude, and Romo. And that came from our board attorney. All right. Any other discussion? Any emotion?
I like that motion.
What's the motion, Bruce?
To approve the books.
Okay, Gary started off, so. Gary, what's your motion?
Yes.
No. Gary, what's your motion? What is your motion?
Approve.
Your motion?
Approve the books.
Your motion is to approve.
Approve the books.
Okay, second. Got a motion by Mr. Martinez, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Munoz, seconded by Ms. Rodriguez to approve the donation of the books. Any further discussion? We'll call Tina.
Mr. Martinez? Mr. Castro?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Ben?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Munoz?
Yes.
And Mr. Brown?
Yes. All right.